The record notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act is to comply with that adequate advance notice that this meeting was given at least forty hours in advance. On March sixteenth, twenty eighteen, notice was mailed to the courier post and to the aldea. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board located by the reception desk at the central office in all school buildings full on to boards within the district.
Ms. Teresa Atwood, Ms. Catherine Blackshear, Mr. Jose Brito Bueno, Ms. Dorothy Burley, Ms. Taisha Manier, Mr. Wassim Muhammad, Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton, Mrs. Martha Wilson. At this time, we'll transition down to the audience for the presentation. All right, we want to welcome everyone back and welcome to our annual budget hearing. Just a quick overview of how we're going to conduct this portion of the meeting. I'll be presenting a very high-level overview of our budget, the one that we submitted this month, and also afterwards, our school business administrator, Ms. Anisa Coppin, will walk us through the user-friendly budget in more detail. So I'll give the high-level overview and Anisa will provide the more detailed user-friendly budget overview. Afterwards, we'll have a public comment portion followed by Ms. Coppin's presentation, after which we'll do the best we can to answer any questions. So we will address all of the questions after Anisa's presentation. So let's jump right into the first slide of the overview. Okay, so again, we want to just start off grounding this conversation with a few quick overview notes. Our budget, as stated before, was submitted to the county earlier this month. This budget was the culmination of an incredible amount of hard work, diligence, collaboration across our district teams, and represents our ongoing commitment to improving student achievement across our schools. One of the biggest things that we'd like to call out is that this budget sustains all of the investments that we'd made in prior years. I think it's worth underscoring that again. This budget does sustain the investments that we've made in prior years with regard to staff, staffing and supports to our schools. Some examples are reading interventionists, behavioral specialists, which we know are critical additional supports to the hard work our teachers and leaders are doing every day. So it's really important if we want to build consistency and continuity in what we are doing and in our efforts to ensure that our students will achieve, that we are able to sustain some of the supports that we see as being beneficial. This budget allows us to do that. So this slide is another representation, and it shares our enrollment trends and how our enrollment trends are so critical in driving the budget. And so as you can see, next year, our district business office is estimating a reduction of a little over four hundred students for next fall relative to the number of students in the district as of our October fifteenth ASA submission, and that is reflected in this graph. The one note I'll add is that these projections are just that, they are projections. And so they are subject to change and revision over the course of the spring and summer. We'll continue to monitor our projections, our enrollment and update, and recalibrate our projections as we move forward. For instance, last spring, after we submitted the budget, Camden Community Charter was closed, which I know many of you are well aware of, but that resulted in eight hundred students that needed to be re-enrolled throughout the city. As things change and we get new information, we'll continuously update these projections and in turn, update our budget to make sure we have the resources and supports needed in our classrooms. So again, high-level, these are projections. We're going to continue to adjust and monitor as we move through the next few months. Absolutely, thank you, Ashley, that's a great call. So just in case you're concerned, this entire presentation will be posted online tomorrow morning, so you can go through, and if you have questions even after that, you can reach out to us, okay? Thanks, Ashley. And on this slide, we wanted to also share, a lot of times when we have budget conversations and discussions around enrollment, we talk about the K-12 enrollment, but we don't always call it out. So we wanted to be very specific here with showing the budget inclusive of our pre-K student population. So we've received a lot of questions recently about our enrollment totals, and we also wanted to share a quick update on what enrollment looks like when we include pre-K. Pre-K is funded separately from the K-12 budget, and so given that, it is treated separately in the budget. We typically don't show pre-K enrollment trends just because of that reason, it's separately funded. That said, for those interested in seeing what enrollment looks like inclusive of pre-K, we're also projecting slight increases in both our district and private provider enrollment numbers next year, as well as the number of pre-K students, I already said that, private providers and district student, pre-K students, so just know that we're expecting an increase there, and this represents the totals inclusive of pre-K. And another area that, of course, is very important to address, and it is also very sensitive at times, what we are transparent in doing so, is our student funding by school type. The district and each Renaissance and charter school in the city are funded based on the students that enroll. That being said, the district also maintains a holdback from charter and Renaissance schools as well. As a result, even though enrollment may be shifting, and we see that shift occurring, we are fortunate to continue to have a relatively high per pupil funding level to support district students. Next year, we're projecting to have about twenty-six thousand dollars per student in the district. So our per pupil expenditure will be about twenty-six thousand dollars per student in district. And you can see in comparison to our other school types that are there, it's lower for our charter and Renaissance partners. And so the last area I'll address before I turn it over to Anisa to take us further has to do with our budget and it being balanced. So in spite of the high per pupil amount that we just referred to, the twenty-six thousand per pupil in district, the combination of enrollment shifts as well as some revenue declines and other increased expenditures, for example, rising salaries across the district, has left us with the need to make twenty-nine point five million in spending adjustments relative to last year's projected budget. So that twenty-nine point five million dollar number is critical. It is worth noting that it is significantly less of an adjustment needed than we've had to make in the previous few years. That said, our approach has been the same this year as in the past. We're doing everything possible to ensure we provide our schools with the resources and the supports needed to ensure our students can thrive. So as you can see, applying that approach, we first appropriated nine point five million of fund balance funds. In addition to that, while we've made hard decisions and reductions centrally in the past, we took another deep look and swept a number of vacant positions and consolidated a few others. In addition to those efforts, we've also been working hard to reduce costs through eliminating or renegotiating central contracts. Finally, the remainder of the spending adjustments, adjustment was made at the school level based upon the estimated enrollment shifts as well as through similar contract and vendor negotiation. So what we are doing is looking at all of our vendors, and I can speak specifically to some of our vendors that support our instructional programs, and we are, we don't want to be reliant on vendors in order for us to be able to drive achievement, but we do want to learn as much as we can. So we are moving into that time where we're thinking about where can we pull back, which contracts can we decrease, and then give over more, more direction and guidance to school leadership teams so that they are able to meet the needs of our teaching staff without being so reliant on outside vendors. And that is something that has also contributed to us being able to, to make some reductions. And as a result of this approach, we're projecting a much lower potential personnel impact as a result of this budget than in prior years. So the next slide that talks, that looks at projected personnel impact, yep, that's, thank you. This is the slide that we're referring to. So if you take a look here, you'll see that there are, these are still very early projections, but still, based upon budget alone, even without a single retirement or separation, we'd only be looking at a personnel reduction of about fifteen to twenty total school-based individuals across the district. So the more quickly, the more, much more likely scenario is that it would continue to come down, that fifteen to twenty number, as we experience normal attrition. And so as always, we're encouraging our staff that if they know they're planning to retire, the sooner they can let us know, the sooner it would be more beneficial as we're making decisions, and we could possibly minimize the potential impact here even further. So the more we know about who's going to exit out, we can adjust and make less cuts. And this is really the last finally, because I said finally before. But finally, before handing it over to Anisa, we just wanted to share a few highlights, so just that you have like a higher-level view of some of our thoughts and visioning around budgeting. We're proud to be able to continue providing across the district these areas. Next year, we'll be maintaining a school-based staff-to-student ratio of five to one. And again, our conversation earlier, we're talking about across the entire district, all of our populations, we're looking to be able to have a five-to-one ratio average. In addition to that, we're maintaining all of the recent school staff investments that we've made over the past few years, which is very critical. Again, as I said before, that includes reading interventionists, behavior specialists, climate and culture coordinators, our high school dean positions, family and operations coordinators, and operations managers, to name a few. Additionally, because we began our planning process so early this year, and largely thanks again to the leadership of not only our team and in the district, but really from the community, we have been able to move forward, forward with ensuring that our gifted and talented pilot sites are set up and running next year. This is a commitment of about an average, an estimated two-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars in our budget, which would cover one teacher in each building and also support our curriculum efforts as we're building out that new curriculum for gifted and talented. And want to, again, shout out Mr. Shawn Brown, who's been an advocate and a thought partner in that process. We're also going to continue to provide custodial coverage of all of our buildings that exceeds the state guidelines of one custodian per nineteen square feet. And finally, we are very excited about the work we've done to continue to expand our high school opportunities for students and families. So we want to, again, continue to drive those efforts in our college and career, on our college and career front. With that being said, I am, of course, happy to answer any questions from the board at this time only. Otherwise, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Anisa, who will walk us through the user-friendly budget. So let me pause first to see if there are any questions from the board, and any public questions will be taken on stage. Any questions at this time? So no questions for the board at this time, so I'd like to present to you the very capable Ms. Anisa Coppin.
Thank you, Ms. McCombs. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight to talk to you about our eighteen-nineteen school budget. I'm asking, there's a lot of detail here, and I'll cover all of them. I'm asking you to hold your questions to the end of the public portion, excuse me, to the end of the public portion meeting. We'll address all of your comments, and if we're not able to address them tonight, we will arrange time to meet with you if you like. You all should have received a copy of the advertised budget for this evening, and I just wanted to let you know that there is more detail in our user-friendly budget, which will be posted on our website in the next day or so. Oh, it's already, I'm sorry, it's already posted on our website. Tonight, I'll be reviewing the major changes year over year. The majority of these changes really result from a realignment of our budget code, so you'll see a lot of areas where in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we had monies, but in eighteen nineteen, it's showing a zero balance, and that's because we've realigned some of those items to the proper budget code. So our first, our first bucket is our instructional bucket. And for the most part, those costs have remained relatively flat over last year, but there's a couple of exceptions. The first exception I want to point out is our special education. We have budgeted one-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars this year, and that's for interpreters, and those interpreters will allow our students with disabilities to be able to stay in the general education classes for more of the day. Also, our school-sponsored and extracurricular activities, our athletics, our before and after-school programs, our summer school programs, have all been shifted to our school-based budgets. Finally, our instructional adult education programs, these are our programs for our at youth, excuse me, our at-risk, at-risk youth, and they represent a rebalancing of our funds between our contract and our school-based staffing. The next bucket is for our support services. The first line is instruction, and that represents our tuition for out-of-state students. And for the most part, these costs more accurately reflect our historical actuals, and it's really, it really represents about a nine percent increase over last year. Our health services line reflects a more precise tagging of our health services expenditures to the appropriate budget codes, as I mentioned earlier. Our child study team and our improvement to instructional services represent a shift into, a shift of those services into our federal funding programs. And finally, our media services, we've shifted these costs into the appropriate account, the budget account, the appropriate account budget, and those costs are now held in our technology budget. Our general administrative costs reflect revisions made by our internal and external council on the likelihood of the district prevailing in long-term litigation. And I'm sorry that I keep talking too close, it's kind of hard to get used to this microphone. The second major change is with our central services and operation and maintenance services. The increases are due to bringing our budgeted amounts more in line with our historical actuals. The transportation costs reflect recent state-mandated limits to our non-public transportation. And finally, on this slide, our employee benefits reflect changes to our district tax liabilities. Under capital expenditures, our facilities and acquisition construction costs, they reflect a proposal to address our urgent minor maintenance repairs that we're prioritizing for next year. The adult education program has been shifted to our grant program, and our charter and Renaissance increases are based on projected enrollment and the state-mandated per pupil funding. Finally, our general, in our general fund, the school-based budget, a three-point-five million dollar decrease in this line is due to enrollment and alignment with our general fund and school-based budgeting. So once again, we're moving items to the appropriate account codes. The next area is our special grants and entitlements. The local projects, you'll see a pretty significant drop in eighteen-nineteen, and that represents items that in the past, we've anticipated grant funding for, but we haven't always realized. So we decided for eighteen-nineteen that we would just remove them from our budget, and once those monies are realized, we'll put them back in. Finally, on this page, the pre-K instruction and support services funding will remain relatively flat with some increases based on our pre-K carryover. This page represents some of our federal resources. Our other state projects, which include the non-public schools, have basically remained flat. And our total state projects, the main driver of that increase is based on the pre-K carryover that I mentioned earlier. So for some of our federal projects, most of them have remained relatively flat. The main changes is to some of our title programs, which were shifting into the school-based budget. Our total expenditures for eighteen-nineteen are about three-hundred-and-sixty million. The following is a summary of the district's added tuition, added district tuition for special education. You'll notice that the bulk of our tuition, twenty-one million, goes to our special needs students, and a large part of that, eleven million, is for private schools for our handicapped students. Student transportation, these amounts reflect contracted services district has with our vendor to provide transportation to our students. Capital outlay, two-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars reflects our capital projects necessary to maintain our aging facilities and infrastructures, and they also, as I mentioned earlier, represent our urgent maintenance repairs. This is a summary of our state aid. Some of the areas went up and some of them went down. Some of our areas that were, received more aid this year were the equalization aid and the security aid, but likewise, we received less aid in some of the other areas, but... This, this slide is a summary of our federal grants, and our grants in total went up about six million dollars for the eighteen-nineteen school year. And finally, our state-funded grants. The district's funding for state grants come in two sources, our non-public aid and our preschool aid. Our non-public aid remains pretty much flat, but the pre-K aid went up due to the pre-K carryover that I mentioned earlier. So the district is presenting, has submitted a balanced budget. Our budget this year is for three-hundred-and-sixty million dollars. We continue to honor our commitments to our students by monitoring our expenses and ensuring that our students and our schools have the resources they need to be successful. So at this time, I'll take any questions from the board members, if there are any. Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you all.
Okay, we will now have public comment. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments of all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard on the, on the agenda item this eve, this meeting, which was the budget. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes. You'll be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all of your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or her designee will address your questions to the extent provided by the law. So at this time, we only have one person, and it is, and I do apologize, Sarah Jocelyn? There are more?
Yes, there are more.
Okay, well, worries, no worries. Right now, it's Sarah.
I, I signed up, so I get to talk first. I found the list. Of course, I'm sure you're going to hear this comment. It would've been lovely to have the actual slides that were presented, because then I could've taken notes on the slides, as opposed to the secondary budget, which made it more difficult, because I kept saying, "Which page are they on?" for some time. So I'm sure that next year, we won't have that problem. I did have the question, I see that you have taken out the grant part. And because this funding includes the, the estimated funding going to MASTRI, I wondered if there was a disclosure for the public about the amount of grants that MASTRI receives, because that would allow a little bit fairer understanding of the actual difference in funding. We understand that MASTRI gets a larger number of grants, and it would be appropriate to see the funding per student for us versus MASTRI and other Renaissance providers as well. It's not focusing on MASTRI. But when we talk about this, we should at least look at for the historic situation, what that funding was, so we could see, and the amount that went for instruction, because that would be an important factor for us to understand. Thank you for that. I see that you have moved the summer school into the school budgets. Did that get moved into a specific school budget where it will be held, or did it get moved into a school budget based on where the student is coming from? I think that's important to understand, because we have a lot of mobility in this district, and there needs to be accountability for that funding if you're going to move them into a school budget. I think that might've been one of the reasons why it was a summer school. I, I, we have not talked as yet about the plans for the summer school, and I'm sure we will be hearing about that next month. I did not see any apportionment or funding that was going to do, to address the issue of the library that is absent at Camden High School and at Big Picture Learning Academy. I did not hear that that was going to be addressed by these maintenance items. So is there funding that is being provided to ensure that the students who will be out of their school for three additional years will have library, library capabilities, especially high school students, and/or transportation to Woodrow Wilson at a time there will be adults present so they can do work? I did not see any funding for public transportation. Maybe that was not broken out, but we have had bus passes and things like that. That did not appear in, in a way that I absorbed it, let's put it that way. Let me take a look at my notes. I appreciate that the reading specialists and the, and the behavior specialists will stay. I think I'm out of time. Thank you for sharing. I'm sure I will have some additional questions when I've had a chance to review the actual document shown. Thank you.
Hello. Hello again. So first, thank you for the presentation. You know, there's an old, there's an old expression when it comes to budgets, "Show me your values, and I'll show you your budget." So I think that every budget that I've ever seen this district shows the community, shows the priorities that you've picked. I want to say, I have some questions, but first, I think... first, I think the most disappointing thing here is, and it's a pretty complex issue, but when you look at the expected attendance at charter schools and Renaissance schools next school year, I can hear Keith Benson in my head right now talking. I wonder if this shows a confidence factor, if this is a measurable confidence factor of how many people have chosen to not pick one of the district schools to send their children. But I also then wonder, what is it that's in this budget that can help fund the improvement in schools so that confidence goes up? And it was, I don't want it to be lost on people that earlier when that really good video about Woodrow Wilson showed, whoever besides Vigar worked on that video, you did a really good job of showing the fact that there are true and real vocational programs going on in that school. And the reason that's important is because, I forget which slide, it was one of the last ones, I think it was, two point five million dollars goes from the school district to Camden County Technical Schools every year for the students to go to what they call either Voc-Ear or Penn Tech in Tickleboro or Pensacola. Now, with that said, just a couple of brief questions. I'm happy to get my answers when I finish or at the end. But I'm just curious about extraordinary aid. It went up a lot, about four times. Is that a part of Murphy's commitment to fully funding the school formula, or is that something else? Because I believe his budget doesn't really take place until July. And then similarly, when you have total revenues from federal sources, and it looks like it went up, well, it looks like it went down, and then it went back up. So it went back up to what it was two years ago, twenty million. You know, I'm just curious where that came from. And, oh, sorry, I was on the same page numbers, but I've already turned the page. Oh, yeah, okay. And then on page eight, towards the bottom. Okay, so for total extracurricular cost, your numbers went up, but I thought I heard Ms. McCombs reference that some of the vendors would maybe not be able to continue. So I'm just curious what that means in terms of total extracurricular. And then total equipment, looks like it went down significantly, but it also looked like it went up significantly before. So curious about that. And then I know my time's up. So just the last thing is, was there a significant change in the contracts or whatever for employee benefits to, what is that, eight, to go down about eight percent? Yeah, okay, you got that? I was clear? All right, thanks.
Sorry, Helen Ferrante?
It's been a while. So first, I want to start by saying good evening. And it's been a while, but I do have some questions on the budget that I do need for my class. So first question, and I'm just going to kind of go down my list. How can you project more allocated funds to Renaissance and Charter schools when the students are currently enrolled in our traditional public schools and are continuously coming back? I personally have seen it, because I'm up to twenty-five in my current class. And it's an inclusion class, so I should have less. But I won't deny anybody. That's just who I am. How can you reduce staff when you currently have vacancies in the district? How can you reduce staff when you have had retirements at various times during the school year that have yet to be filled at various schools? Since we have current vacancies primarily in the special areas, why not reallocate the funds to a STEM science special area program, or a librarian, or historian, something that our kids will be able to experience a teacher instead of a sub on a regular basis? Like, I'm looking out for them. It's done in Cherry Hill. I have a presentation I already created from out of my classes. I'd be happy to share it with you if you're interested in something. But I know in Cherry Hill, they have a STEM program that my son absolutely loved in middle school, and it's a special area class. Next question, why was money given to special ed interpreters to keep more students in the general education classroom? Why couldn't the money be redirected or reallocated to funding smaller class sizes, which data proves is a better learning environment for our students, especially in an urban environment? Is there a way to break down the per pupil expenditure per Renaissance Charter and District School? When I look at the stats, it says there is a difference of about fourteen million, eighteen nine hundred and twenty-six that is currently going to be anticipated that will be going to our Renaissance and Charter schools next year. That's the difference. Like, that's the total amount that I added up. Or, I'm sorry, they're the differences that I added up per both on page five. My question is, why can't this money be allocated for traditional public schools since the students are currently enrolled? And I always say that because they keep coming back. And then we start with not enough teachers. And it all comes back to the budget and the funding. So why don't we have those teachers here now while we have them, instead of getting rid of fifteen to twenty teachers that was in one of the presentations? To me, fifteen and twenty may not be a lot, but it is with our kids. Because then, say, they don't go to the Charter Renaissance schools. If they don't go to the Charter Renaissance schools, the district teachers, we have the overloaded classes. And I know you claim nine to one and five to one, but you said it yourself, Ms. McCombs, it's an average. It's a district average. And some schools are overloaded and other schools are not. It's not fair to overload the schools that are doing well. It's just not fair. So I'm looking for equality for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrante. Your time is up.
And I'm finished.
Kevin Barfield.
Good evening. Good evening again. A couple of questions in reference to what you was, Ms. McCombs, when you was referencing the cutting back on vendors for service, can you be more specific in reference to what particular vendors you're referring to, in reference to looking at cutting back? The other part that I have a question in reference to the vocational education in reference to how is that money been already allowed, on how you're going to utilize that money, just coming for that vocational education program or for next year? Have y'all already identified areas that y'all was going to have this instructional material, whether it's improvement in equipment or anything? Is any outline on that, since you've come up with a budget amount? Excuse me. I would think that you already identified how that money is being allocated. At-risk and alternative programming, can you be more specific in reference to what? Because I see that you have a big drop in the alternative educational program. Can you be more specific? Because I see that you're dropping from one point six million to two hundred and eighty thousand. Can you kind of give us more of an information on that program? And then your capital expenses? Number five is the capital expenses? Yeah, the capital expenses. When you talk about the equipment, can you give us, is there any kind of documentation that kind of identifies how that money is being spent or is going to be spent on the equipment? And then the facility acquisitions, I see the amount that you have, only two point two million. I don't know if that's something that you're projecting. I see you had three buildings that you're looking at selling. I know the Board of Education has been sold, so supposed to be sold. So I don't see any of those numbers reflecting in that number. So can you give us some clarity on where it happened to, or where is that money at for that five million dollars that was supposed to have been, you know, reported? That was the building, Front Street was sold. And then, again, I know that when we're talking about transfers of funds, I don't know that is anything that I've seen in reference to resolutions that kind of reflect that, you know, when we see that some of these line items have transfers of accounts, that I haven't seen any resolution, which we know that's kind of a requirement through state statutes, anytime you transfer funds, that there's resolutions that kind of follows that. So can you kind of give us some background on any resolutions that maybe I might have missed that shows these transfer of funds? Thank you.
And that ends our public comment. I will turn it over to the, I'm not sure who's handling it. Okay, to Ms. McCombs and Ms. Cappan.
I want to make a general statement first, and something that, Ms. Jocelyn, thank you, Kim, I want to make a general statement, especially what Ms. Jocelyn shared regarding the difficulty in being able to follow the presentation tonight. We do apologize for that, and we will make plans to change that in the future. But we do have to share with you the user-friendly budget because it's the advertised budget. So that's what we did share tonight. But we will make sure. And the other presentation, I believe, is online. If it's not online, it should be online tomorrow, so you're able to see it and ask questions. But we will do a better job of that moving forward. Thank you for your feedback in that area.
So Ms. Jocelyn, I wanted to address a couple of things that you brought up. You mentioned the summer schools. What I had mentioned in the budget or in my budget presentation is that we have begun to properly align costs in the right budget code. I know that Mr. Barfield mentioned that we need to have a resolution. That's not actually true. We are aligning the costs with the appropriate GAAP accounting functions. So we, in the past, we haven't been as precise as we should have been, but that's what we're doing. So we're basically moving programs into the appropriate budget code.
Does that mean you're not moving what the titles around that you're allowed to? See, there's certain title funds that you can reallocate during the ESOP process. And that's one of the questions that I think Mr. Barfield answered, was are you moving it between one budget area or another? Or are you just kind of taking each line item and allocating it to a school? What I heard you say was you were allocating it to a school.
What I said is that we are allocating it to our school-based budget, and we're doing that on the advice of our auditors. So I don't know if that addresses your question.
So the school-based budget doesn't actually refer to a existing school. It refers to a Title I as a general school-based budget. Is that what you're saying?
No, the school-based budget refers to the schools, and it's also broken down by location of schools. So like, you asked about the summer school program and where that was being housed. It's being housed in the schools that have a summer school program.
Okay, so that answers that question. So it would be where they're housed, not where the students come from.
Correct.
Thank you.
You also talked about the funding for the per pupil at the district in Renaissance, and you said in the slide that it will be posted online. We mentioned in our presentation that the district is receiving twenty-six thousand for in-district students, whereas the Renaissance students, the funding is eighteen thousand per student.
And I was separately told that you're only dealing with federal funding and things like this, and not private grants, which also are funding that is used in the Renaissance area. So there's other monies that they have that aren't being accounted for in this budget.
Right, because they're money.
Right, no, I'm just saying, but when you look at what's being spent for students...
The per pupil, the per pupil funding is an amount that we're mandated by the state to provide to the Renaissance and Charter schools. It's something separate of grant funding. We don't provide them grant funding. We provide them a flat per pupil amount.
I understand, but when you look at the funding that's actually used, available for students, it's that plus other.
I'm going to, I'm going to, excuse me for the interruption, but I'm going to, in the interest of time, so that everybody gets their questions answered, I'm going to ask if you could continue on. And then if you want to continue later with greater detail that you'd meet with...
No, I'm happy to set up a meeting to talk to you about it in detail.
I can take my answers offline to save time unless anybody else wants to give an answer. I'm tired.
That's, okay, we can do that.
Hey, Ms. Ferrante, you asked a few questions, and we'll address as many of these that we can here. So with regard to special ed interpreters, you had a question as to why those interpreters are, I believe, in the classrooms with the students, as opposed to that money being diverted elsewhere, if I have that correct. The funding is for interpreters for our hearing impaired students. Of course, it's legally required that we provide it. And with the idea of moving, placing students in the least restrictive environment, even those students who may be hearing impaired, we want them to be in the least restrictive environment. So that's why those supports and resources and aids and equipment follow them. So by law, we have to provide that. With regard to staffing, as you know, we have to staff by the title and in accordance with certification requirements. So that's something that also comes into consideration when we're thinking about vacancies. And you had a great question about, if we have vacancies, why are we looking at still reducing within that range of fifteen to twenty teachers, instructional staff members? All staffing decisions are made by title. We take into account vacancies and separations and retirements as we are looking at our staffing and what we're going to allocate in those areas. For some titles, we may need fewer positions. For others, we may need to still hire. So we're looking by title and vacancy in order to determine best what needs to occur. Again, that range of fifteen to twenty is what we are projecting now without looking at who's going to separate from the district, and that number will be updated. I do appreciate also your out-of-the-box thinking when it comes to sharing some of the ideas that you're seeing in your children's school district with regard to STEM classes and doing something different for our students. And that's something we can take back and really look at in a comprehensive way. I wouldn't feel comfortable giving you an answer or an assurance that we would move in that direction without looking at it. But do appreciate your innovative thinking and approach to trying to keep our students engaged.
Mr. Barfield, I wanted to address your question about the sale of our administration building on 201 Front Street. Actually, those funds are built into this year's budget. The sale will take place during the seventeen eighteen school year, and the funds have already been built into our operating budget. You also mentioned you had some questions about our at-risk program. And we are looking at ways to reduce our reliance on our contractors and looking at some other alternatives for bringing those costs down.
I told you had a few questions, and I'm going to address a couple of them here. With regard to CTE funding, all CTE funding is outlined in our Perkins Grant, and it has been approved by the DOE. A little bit more with regard to our vocational pieces, the Perkins Grant funding supports CTE programs. We are focused on embedding math, and I'm sure you're aware of that piece. We're focused on embedding math and literacy in CTE. Also, continuing to develop a stronger CTE curriculum is a top priority. You did also ask a specific question about our vendors. And when I shared in the overview that we are looking to move and become less reliant on vendors to provide educational direction, guidance, professional development, support for our teachers. Some of those specifically, and we can talk offline as well, our STEP program, which is a program we use for
is a program we use for reading, diagnostic assessment, and instruction to target improvement in our, in instruction in those areas for our students in grades K to five. Our STEP contract was, in the past, historically over $1 million, and we have brought that number down this year considerably, to the tune of, and this is roughly...
300? 100 or 300?
350, so right in that range, so that's a big reduction there. We are also looking at our ANET partners and our relationship with ANET, and looking at what we can scale back on. So we've taken a look with our chief school support officers at what services and coaching that we need, so what can we scale back on with coaching and ANET, and utilize those funds and move them into another area. Also, when we think about assessments, we're also looking at what we can do to decrease the amount of time our students are spending on assessment versus instruction. So with our ANET also, we're looking at what aspects of the ANET assessment tool we want to continue to move forward with, and we would see a modest reduction there. With regard to textbooks, we are not, so last year, we did a great job at making sure that centrally, we ordered textbooks, materials, and everything that was needed for our schools, because it was almost like a reset, in trying to make sure that our schools had, our students had textbooks, and we heard from board reps that there were certain areas where they didn't have textbooks, so we centralized that process. This year, we decentralized it, so that schools are now ordering the replacements, and we're not doing, we're not ordering as many textbooks, so that is a huge reduction in the expenditures that we're spending on textbooks. For online duplicative resources, like Think Central, we took another look at, what are those online resources that we're using, and what can we do to scale back on those that are duplicative? So that Think Central is just one example, but we've done that. So if you want specific dollar amounts for the rest, we can set up an appointment, but those are some huge areas where we're able to kind of pull back on vendors and bring that in-house in a different way. I believe we've addressed everyone, and if we have not, please call it to our attention, and we will make sure that we bring our word and address, as best as we possibly can, your questions and concerns. I'll turn it over to... I'll turn it over to our business administrator.
At this time, I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. A second? Motion to adjourn was made by Ms. Taisha Manier, and a motion to, it was second by Mrs. Martha Wilson. The meeting is now adjourned.